Okay, alright. Alright folks, let's come back together here for consideration on these two doctored items. We're down to commissioners, we were down to questioning of the applicant and those opposing the application by the commission. Our time has expired. If we have any additional questions, you know, from commissioners, we need to probably vote to add some time to, you know, to our questioning period. I kinda sensed that we were coming down to most of the questions where had been asked and, and that, you know, we were ready to move into the rebuttal and that kinda thing. So is that, is that where we are? Okay. I see heads shaking. So, let's, let's move into next portion of the hearing, which is the rebuttal evidence and cross-examination by the applicant. So, Mr. Club, I think there were several questions that were probably asked that maybe you could respond to.
There were, Mr. Chairman.
And the rebuttal.
Are you ready?
Yeah, we're ready. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I think I answered some of those questions. When the commission were asking their questions, they kinda overlapped. I was checking those off during the break and I'll try to skip the ones that I think we've already covered. I'll just go down the list as I made a list as the questions were coming up. Mr. Kiber stated that there's nothing different in this project than the last one we presented. And I purposefully started out my presentation today pointing out the differences. And I don't think that's a fair statement. I'm gonna go through those one more time. These are what we heard from the neighborhood meeting, the TRC. We disagreed that they were problems, but what we heard the concerns, and those concerns are it need to be closer to I-71. You can't get any closer. There were storm runoff concerns, the stream that crossed Old Coach Road that went into Glen Meadows, the runoff from there. We're not seeing any water in that direction. All the water's going back towards the city of Crestwood proper at this point. There's no water going in that direction. We heard concerns about cars, which again can be worked out if we experience those, but we've now moved to a property where we are not aware of any cars features. And I haven't heard that brought up tonight or today, excuse me, and I think that's for good reason because we're, we're at the top of the hill here and there are no cars features on this property. There were concerns last time about the view. Again, we're at I-71, not to disparage another business, but we're behind some new storage units off of 329 and quite frankly, we're about .38 miles off of 329 itself. And Gant actually showed a graphic of the Glen Meadows subdivision and what their proposed view of this project would be. And I think when you took a look at those, and if anybody's had a chance to see the site, I think you would agree that their view of any would be very, very minimal in this case. There were also concerns about traffic. Highway 329, you've heard the traffic study, you've heard Ms. Wall speak of that today. I think we've remedied any concerns. There were also concerns about the rerouting of Brownsboro Alt. We have, I have the necessity of doing anything to Brownsboro Alt because we're building our own road. If we can talk about traffic, I don't, I don't wanna belabor the point, but again, the numbers that have been given here today are not numbers we made up. Those are numbers that the state has come up with. Those are numbers that Ms. Zimmerman verified herself with the traffic count on August 7th, excuse me, April 17th of this year. I went and confirmed with Ms. Wall because I did not want to quote her. Her own analysis here shows that with the apartments, the expected traffic counts on Highway 329 in the year 2023 would be 6,255. And although she said it's not a hard and fast rule, but the general consensus among traffic engineers is a road such as 329 would not consider improvements such as adding another lane. Those numbers got somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 to, excuse me, 10,000 to 15,000. Were proposed to be at 6255. That's Ms. Wall's number. She's here, she can verify that, certainly can speak for herself. As far as, as far as rural nature of the land, agricultural uses, ladies and gentlemen, this is exit 14. This is one of the quadrants of that exit. You drive, you drive anywhere in the country, interstate exchanges are where development is located. This is the first exit outside of Jefferson County, the most populous county in this state by far. To think that this exit is not ripe and that Oldham County wouldn't expect and welcome development, this, this exit is just not realistic. This is the very definition of where intense uses should be considered. And we think that the use that we are proposing, although it is multifamily, is a very high quality development. And it's something that Oldham County can be proud of, it's certainly something that I'm proud to present to you today. Drainage onto 329, obviously we've already talked about that, the water is really draining the same place it was before. If there are any questions for Gant, the, a moment ago, the secondary drainage, I know Mr. Horton had a question, the secondary drainage on the remaining Jones property, that's where the property, the 14 acres for the apartment, but it's already draining there. It will drain the road, it will also act as secondary detention for this project. So we have actually more detention than would typically be required. Again, that will all be approved by the county engineer prior to us beginning construction on this project. If it's not approved, we can't build. There was some talk about open space. Again, this is one of those things that, you know, what you would love to see and what's realistic maybe are two different things, but open space is defined as land that's not developed. The county regulations, we cede those regulations for open space. I want you to keep in mind that this sheet of paper has a triangle in the middle of it that represents 14 acres and it doesn't even take up half of the piece of paper. I realize that the areas that don't have parking or buildings on them look small on that piece of paper, but certainly we feel that there are numerous places to fly kites, to walk. This is not testimony that was previously given, but it's certainly part of the application. There will be walking trails. Several thousand feet of paved?
Or gravel.
Possibly paved, certainly gravel. Walking trails will be on this property for residents to walk on, for exercise, to walk their dogs. We have, we have a dog walking part, a basketball court. We have a swimming pool. All of the grass areas in this particular development will be maintained and mowed on a regular basis. They will be open and available for use by all residents. And finally, one of the last speakers raised an issue regarding the trees and we're trying to hide something. I have a couple of responses to that, one of which is that we're very proud of the building we're proposing to build here. You've seen renderings of that building. We've worked with the Jones family to make something that they're proud of and that they think will be a great addition to that interchange in their property that's been in the family for, for several years as well as the other property they own around there. First of all, we're not trying to hide anything. We're proud of these buildings. We want people to see them. Quite frankly, we think when people see them, they'll sell theirselves. The second thing is, is we're required by your ordinance, obviously, to have a 20-foot landscape buffer. We want to comply with that. We're trying to do. I know the neighbors to the back haven't spoke tonight, but at the neighborhood meeting, they were present. They did ask for buffering and we will do everything in our power to maintain the existing landscape buffer that exists on that rear property line. And we will plant other trees, again, in an effort to help to satisfy them so that if they do not want to see this development, we can shield that from them as much as possible. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any, actually, I do have one other thing. The I-71 improvements. Ms. Zimmerman, can you, you've looked into that while we were on break. If you can please maybe give some welcoming information to the commission members.
The I-71 project is a widening, will add an additional lane in each direction, northbound and southbound, from the I-265 interchange to the I, to the exit 14 ramps. The optimistic schedule right now is that that will go to construction in 2019, but certainly will begin construction in 2020. Additionally, there'll be an improvement made at the Gene Snyder interchange that's gonna separate the traffic getting off there that tends to be, for those of you that drive that and know that little clog in the morning from 22 trying to get onto I-71 northbound, and how do you merge on I-71, that, that southbound side of I-71 will experience significant improvements. And again, that project is optimistically gonna start construction in 2019, but certainly without any unforeseen circumstance should start in 2020.
And it was, it was allocated for in the current budget that was just passed?
Correct, it was in the budget.
Alright. Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else on rebuttal. Certainly, we'll remain available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Alright, now we're down to rebuttal evidence, cross-examination by the opposition. So you all also have 10 minutes. So whoever would like to come forward and start?
Stephanie Hawkins. One of my questions, the question regarding open space and are the setbacks included in that open space was not answered. I also was confused on the location of the detention. It's on an adjacent property, must be, is it the same owner, adjacent property? And so bridge that gap for me if you don't mind. And then, and then signs. I mean, I think that was, said that that would be kicked down the curb, or kicked down the road, whatever that saying is, and, or it'd be evaluated later? I would like to...
We have separate sign regulations and as long as they're in compliance with those, and I did misspeak that it is not an off-premise sign, that there has been legislation passed in court cases that we cannot regulate content. So as long as it complies with the size of our regulations, it's a separate application.
Okay, but would be on the property or would be off the property or both?
Be at the, I'm assuming at 329.
At the entrance? Okay, but those don't have to be shown in the renderings?
They do not.
They do not? Okay. I'd be interested in seeing what that ends up being proposed. But yeah, the open spaces regarding this and how it fits in with the setbacks is a question I would like to see answered. And, and again, I haven't heard how it would benefit those who already live here as well. Thank you.
Mr. Jones, do you wanna just answer a couple of those?
Well, you've got a clock.
Okay, alright. Alright, let's hold up on the response and then we'll get you all, we don't wanna take away from your time, so, Mr. Kiber.
Well, this is where it gets really tough. We miss our attorney a whole lot when we get down to rebuttal and final statement, but I'll try to do my best. The rebuttal, first of all, the cars thing...
Let me just remind you that there is an opportunity for another five-minute final statement at the end.
Yeah, right, right. The cars, first of all, I keep going back to this because it bugs the heck out of me, this school capacity mitigation thing, and I'm gonna harp on it because it's ridiculous. That's all I can say. And, you know, it shows, I almost feel sorry for the previous applicant, Kip Coquintide, on the previous property that we went about all this before because, you know, he didn't have the pull, the strings to pull to make that kinda thing happen, so he didn't get approved. And I hope the commission can see through all of that this time around. The traffic study, the traffic, you know, this thing is just the tip of the iceberg because this 14 acres is just 14 acres on, I believe it's 68 acres, their total property owned by the Jones group, of which...
Kiber, we need to kinda speak towards the microphone here.
Of which 30, I believe, is owned commercial, is 25, 30? I'm not sure. But, so, so, you know, we talk about apartments today, we talk about 120-room hotel later on, we talk about, well, that's planned for the same property. And, and, you know, we don't have a hard and fast plan, but somehow the traffic study was done to include 120-room hotel. So, you know, and now we're gonna mitigate the school capacity for the sewage treatment plant in Apple Patch so that we can build the school up by other Jones property that owns right there at the entrance to the school in Brownsboro, right behind the community center. So it goes on and on and on, and, you know, I think you've heard from lots of folks here in Brownsboro that this, Joyce and I moved here 13 years ago to get away from the same thing that happened in Prospect where we'd lived our whole married lives. And we built a farm, I mean, we had a farm property. We actually do farming on the property and still do, even though we're getting a little old. And, and so this is the way Brownsboro has been, is today, and the way all of these people back here would like to keep it.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have to say.
Wow, 400 more parking spaces. I think that equals probably about two to three acres of asphalt, which is creating a heat island, and it's going to create all kinds of issues as you go up and down 329 now, because now is what we're talking about, we're not talking about in 2022. Maybe then there'll be an opportunity for some type of this development to be worked into the comprehensive plan. I don't know. My concern is the traffic, yeah, that's a little bit of it. My concern is still, water runs downhill, it's still gonna have some type of effect, even though it's been mediated on that plan at some level. But the amount of cars that that is, is just mind-blowing to me in Brownsboro. My next concern is, we're gonna do the 14 acres here, what is the holdup to go ahead and do the next 14 acres in a similar development and then the next, and then be right back on top of the Glen Meadows subdivision again? So that's my biggest concern is down the road for the future planning, but currently we gotta worry about 400 more parking spaces. So, thank you.
Alright, who'd like to go next? Yes, ma'am? We're down to a little under three minutes, or right at a little three and a half minutes.
I'm so glad that Bob's still gonna be my friend. I'm going to harp again on the traffic. As I reiterated before, we owned our own business near the, near the airport, and for 25 years, we commuted from 1979 until we sold our business in 98, thank God. And since then, we will not go south on I-71 anytime in peak hours, morning or evening. And as I said, I'm not an engineer like Ms. Zimmerman. However, I am a resident who's been there for almost 40 years. So I would like to ask, I looked on my phone, April 17th was a Tuesday, which, you know, that's good, you did it during the week. What are peak hours? Are they, when I went to work, we had to go earlier and earlier from 6:30 in the morning instead of 7, instead of 7:30, and then had to head home from work like 6:30 in the evening. So, right now, we won't travel unless it's 9:00 AM to maybe 3:00 PM, going south or north. So that was one of my questions. And then 30 months of construction, having been in the building industry for 25 years, 30 months is a long time to have trucks running up and down 329, ingress and egress to build the 216 units. Seems like we're putting the cart before the horse. We've gotta do something about the traffic on that area between the access and getting to I-71. Trucks are going to be going like crazy, they're in two lanes. I don't know the answer, I'm not an expert. I'm just saying that right now, we can barely get to our homes or get into Crestwood at peak travel times. I owned 19 acres on the corner of Glen Arm and Old Zerring with the late Dr. Al Sheeman and the late Bob Horner because we bought those acres from Lee Clor so we wouldn't see 19 homes built there. And when we sold, after Al Sheeman died unexpectedly, Bob Horner said, "We've gotta sell." So I bought, we sold six lots, a little over three acres each. And I had to widen Old Zerring Road from 329 to Glen Arm before we could even sell. So why aren't we going to address this terrible problem of traffic from I-71 to the ingress and egress? Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Peoples. Alright, the time has expired on the rebuttal evidence and we're down, down to final statement of the opposition. Is there anyone that would like to speak a final statement? Is there anyone that hasn't had an opportunity that would like to have a say? Yes, ma'am? Let's get you up first and then...
So there's been talk, Karen Zoltow, about development and that it's automatic that if you have an exit, there's gonna be development. And you can look at development that way, or you can look at development as, what are you planning on doing? And a lot of committees do think about that, the type of development, if you're gonna develop, picture getting off that exit, go to the right or go to the left. It's really, really different. So how do you wanna do that? And do you want it to look the same? And then also, I'm gonna speak just for the land. People are talking about right now and development, but when that land is gone, a dairy farm or whatever, it's gone forever. So thinking about that further down, besides the people living here right now, which I haven't met anybody who's for this, how things are gonna look and the character of the area 10 years, 20 years, 50 years, 100 years? Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Kiber? Is there anyone else that hadn't had a chance to say anything? Or, okay, yes, ma'am. Mr. Kiber, let me get, let her come up here real quick and, because she hadn't had an opportunity to have any rebuttal.
Just a quick question, please. A lot of the questions have already been raised...
Now, this is a final statement, it's really not a question time.
Oh, okay, well, I guess I will just use my final statement to ask, what were the hours in which the traffic was studied? If we could please address that, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
That'll be their opportunity if they want to. So, Mr. Kiber, go ahead.
Alright, well, this is where I try to take the place of the attorney. So I'm, I'm gonna do the same as he would do, and I'm gonna tell you the reasons from the comprehensive plan why I think you should turn down this application. The last time, as you know, it was an 11-0 vote against, that was the property immediately adjoining this property. So, you know, we moved one property owner over. The only thing I heard different is the cars thing, which may or may not be, nobody has really done a geology study that I've heard or seen that would tell us whether there really is a cars problem there or not. And that'll be done later in the process, so. But, so there's no testimony or evidence that the current zoning of R2 is inappropriate. That's number one. The proposed plan is not in compliance with LU-1-3. The development is not compatible with the surrounding residential density of the three properties. There's farm, a cattle farm on, on the one side, the north side, there's a horse farm on the, on the other, one other side, and then over here is the previous property that we talked about before, and then of course, I-71. So, and then also, it's not in compliance with LU-1-4. And by the way, these are the same reasons that you found the last time to reject the previous application. And that is to encourage the use of land for agriculture, farming, dairying, pasture, horticulture, and wildlife, thus assisting in preserving the rural character of Oldham County. So that's LU-1-4. So those are the same reasons that the previous, the same reasons proposed for rejecting the previous application, and I propose that you have the same reasons today to reject this application. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. A little bit of time left, is there anyone else that would like to have a final statement? Anyone else, final statement? Alright, seen none. Mr. Club, your final statement, five minutes also.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property in question, and I don't, again, wanna beat a dead horse, but we have C4 on the front of this. This is at the first interstate exchange into this county, the first outside of Jefferson County. We have C4 zoning on the front of this property, we actually have C4 zoning on the front of the Coquintide property, which is the property we proposed this development on seven, eight, nine months ago. We actually have I-1 property directly across the road. This property borders I-71, it's a triangle, it borders I-71 on one side, it borders the remaining property of the current landowner, the Jones family, on another side. And on the north side of the property, there's actually a substantial buffer. There are two, only two properties that borders theirs, those are large acreage tracts that do have homes on them, but again, they don't front on this road, and they are quite a distance away from the proposed development. I have handed out, Ms. Alby actually did that for me this morning with our pocket of proposed motion, that I would ask the commission, anybody who's thinking about making a motion in favor of this application to consider. There are a couple of different grounds under which this commission can recommend the approval of a zone change. That's KRS 100.213, which first requires the commission to determine whether or not the MAP Amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. It goes on to say that in the absence of such a finding, you can go on to see whether the current zoning is inappropriate or there have been major changes in economic, physical, or social nature in the area which would mandate that. I would submit to you, a review, a careful review of the comprehensive plan would indicate that this requested zone change is in agreement with the comprehensive plan. Specifically, land use objective LU-2-1 states that to establish neighborhood development guidelines promote connectivity between neighborhoods, encourage integration of community and civic facilities, and address issues of neighborhood identity and compatibility with adjacent development, and ensure that adjacent development is sensitive in both design and environmental impact of historic sites, neighborhoods, and districts. Housing in Oldham County should include efforts to provide an appropriate mix of housing types, appropriate mix of housing types, and opportunities to meet the needs of all people. Again, I'll point out that this property is not some rural, unincorporated portion of this county. This property lies within the city of Crestwood. Further, the proposed development would further that goal and objective by providing an appropriate mix of housing types. You've heard testimony here today that there have been market studies done by my client that indicates that there is a dire need for multifamily housing in this county, and I can assure you from spending numerous hours with Mr. Edwards and Mr. Hawke that they're not wanting to do something that's not needed in this county. I can assure you of that. The proposed development, albeit multifamily residential development, will be compatible with surrounding development as the applicant desires to construct upscale luxury apartments in a planned development with sufficient community facilities to accommodate the planned residence, and again, we have talked about that. According to Table 2.5 of the comprehensive plan in 2010, only 2.3% of all housing in this county was multifamily housing over 10 units. Additionally, the commentary indicates, as we all know, that the rural metro continues to grow and expand in all directions, and certainly one of those directions is towards Oldham County. The front portion of this land is zone C4 with I-1 and C4 directly across Highway 329 with I-2 zoning relatively close proximity on an additional tract of land. Additionally, this proposed project is located directly adjacent to I-71. Objective LU-2-4 is to encourage higher density housing to be located near transit services. Again, we have I-71, we also, we have exit 14 onto I-71 within 1,200 feet of the entrance to this development. We also have the parking lot, which is gonna be directly across from 329 Alt once that's completed, which will also help provide transportation for these residents. Transportation objective T-1-1 is to protect investments of the major thoroughfare system, limit residential access onto arterial roadways, prevent safety hazards. We've had a traffic study, no improvements are recommended for Highway 329. I would stress that we are building our own road. All of the traffic from these units will exit onto our road that we will construct that will go across the Jones property, which will be a city road. All of that traffic will then exit at one location onto 329, furthering that goal and objective. Again, utilize traffic impact analysis for the project, that's objective T-1-6. Again, we weren't even required to do a traffic study, the county recommended, we without hesitation did that. We presented those numbers here today, they support a finding that there are no improvements needed, and that this highway, Highway 329 specifically, will continue to operate... operate at a sufficient level of service. Community facilities, objective CF-1-3.
Club, your time has expired.
All right. Mr. Chairman, very briefly, the rest of that speaks for itself, if the commission members would like to read that. Thank you for your time and consideration at this point.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, with that, docket PZ-18010 and PZ-18011 has been completed, and at this point, I will call on Mr. Urban and Mr. Carter to outline what's being requested. Commissioners, we will consider zoning change first. This would be a recommendation to the city of Crestwood to change the zoning from R2 residential district to R4 residential district. So I ask Mr. Urban to outline what's the requirements as far as the zoning change is concerned.
I want to, as I always remind you, in a zoning MAP Amendment case, that you have those two decisions to make. First is the zoning MAP Amendment, and you really kind of look at it from that perspective, even though you've seen a development plan and proposed use, the particulars of the development plan aren't discussed at the zoning MAP Amendment. You're, again, going to recommend to Crestwood City Council, your recommendation either to approve or deny. You can consider including any of the proposed testimony from either the applicant or the opposition. You have justification statement that was in your packet originally, and also a proposed motion by the applicant. You've heard testimony in closing from the opposition that you could rely on if you were so inclined to recommend denial. So on page three in your staff report, there are sample motions for either approval or denial. Again, I encourage you to look at those and fill in the blanks, can't just parrot what it says, you have to actually add that reasoning in either case. So again, your first consideration is zoning MAP Amendment recommendation.
Mr. Carter, anything you need to add?
No.
All right. Commissioners, you've heard what's outlined here on docket PZ-18010, which is a zoning MAP Amendment request, which will go to the city of Crestwood as a recommendation from the Planning Commission to change the zoning from R2 residential to R4 residential. So at this time, the chair would now entertain a motion on the proposed zoning MAP Amendment. Yes, sir. Mr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been writing some things here, so I won't forget it. I'm sure we'd all feel as you folks do out there and probably have the same concerns, but our commission is bound by laws, regulations, and the expert testimony, and if an applicant fulfills all of that, we have limited options. And this applicant has fulfilled and complied with all the necessary requirements for an approval motion. So my motion is to approve docket PZ-18010 for zoning change from R2 zoning to R4, and to refer to the city of Crestwood for approval. Based on, first of all, it's stated that all zoning changes require a statement of demonstration of appropriateness for the change under Section 380.010, and I feel like they do so under items there, number one, there are five of them, and they've fulfilled all five. One of them happens to be, and that's the reason I asked the specific question, as to beginning date and closing date of the project, and they did answer that, and that was the last of the fulfilling requirements. Number two, it does comply with objectives, and many of them that they put down are very accurate, and they're outlined by them in their application. One in particular has to do with LU-2-4 about land use objectives, and there, we are looking for higher densities and places near transit services. In addition to that, the transportation objective, T-1-6, they did provide a full impact study rather than just a review, and they brought that here. So based on that, there's my motion.
Okay. Mr. Carter, is that an adequate motion, sir?
It is, except for the commentary about what the board can consider. The board does not have to agree with the expert testimony, they can follow what, if they believe the persons that oppose this as to the traffic in the area, they can believe that.
Okay. But his motion, my question, is his motion is adequate?
Yes, except for that.
Okay, all right. Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a second on the motion? Yes ma'am, Ms. Bonet, seconds. All right, now, we'll open it up for discussion, and this is a motion to approve the requested zoning change on docket PZ-18010 for recommendation to the city of Crestwood to approve the requested zoning change from R2 residential to R4 residential. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, seen, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McWilliams.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I got you. Mr. Chairman, when we're in discussion, and you're always telling me not to do what? Would it testify? No?
Well, yeah, not to testify when you're, but now we're down to the...
But I can testify sort of now, can I?
Well, you need to be, you know, you can comment, let's put it that way.
Well, if, I'm going to try to comment and not testify, and I have no doubt you'll tell me when I cross the line.
Okay, all right.
I want to remind you of one thing, this is only on the zoning MAP Amendment, so it's not about the development plan, it's just a change of zoning.
Oh, yeah, yes, sir, I understand.
Okay. Go ahead, proceed.
Okay, Ms. E.
No, you're going to...
All right. I, there aren't many people in this room that have lived in Oldham County longer than I have. I used to drive my go-kart from Floydsburg Road all the way to our farm at five miles an hour and never pass a car. So there's nobody in here that's seen any more development in Oldham County than I have. And, you know, and I've been in many, many of these hearings, and you hear the same thing. Development is going to crawl, folks, I mean, that's just the way it is, and our job is to take a look at that when it happens and say, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? You know, I think, I think the applicant, since the last time, has done some things, has made some changes that will change my mind because I'm going to vote for it. Movement toward 71, I think they've worked hard to alleviate the concerns about the water. I don't know about the 329 water, one way or the other, but I think if there's something that they can do, and that's considered to be a problem, I'm confident they will. The traffic study is a traffic study, the traffic study, and I've looked at many of the traffic studies and shook my head too, but it is what it is, and I feel some level of obligation to concur with that. The school capacity, you know, I'm intimately familiar with school capacity and the decisions that the school board has to make about building schools and where to build schools and so on and so forth, and, you know, I can remember when the Klingenfuss Farm was bought in Crestwood, and they thought that was the biggest boondoggle that ever was, and people were ready to throw the board out, and now you've got four schools on that campus. So who knows what's going to happen in the future? I think they've taken care of some of the sewer issues with the pump station. I think the fact that, you know, it is there at an interchange, I don't know of any interchange that doesn't develop, whether it be commercially, or whether it be, you know, with gas stations, hotels, motels, restaurants, apartment buildings, or whatever. I understand why people want to keep Brownsborough like Brownsborough is. I understand. I have empathy. I had a place one time where I backed up to two farms, and all of a sudden, they were developments, and I moved, and I didn't want to, Mr. Kibler. I didn't want to, but I did. That's just part of it. So, in deference to you folks, I just wanted to know why I'm voting the way I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion on the city of Crestwood's zoning change? All right, we'll proceed with the vote on docket PZ-18010, and this is a recommendation to the city of Crestwood to change the zoning from R2 residential district to R4 residential district. Alvey, I'm sorry.
Okay. Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Klingenfuss?
Yes.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Halfling?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
All right, the motion to recommend to the city of Crestwood a zoning change from R2 residential to R4 residential district on docket PZ-18010 has been approved on a vote of 13 to 0. So with that, we have one more docket to consider, the development plan, and on docket PZ-18011, and Mr. Urban, if you would, outline what's being requested here.
Sure. You're asked to consider either approval or denial of the proposed development plan. On page two in your packet, there are proposed binding elements, I'll read them out loud. There should be no changes to the plan without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission and the Engineers Office. The second one is the applicant is required to submit a landscape plan for review and approval by staff. The third is the applicant must upgrade the Apple Patch Pump Station to accommodate the future Brownsborough campus. And the fourth is that the preliminary plan must comply with all established state and county ordinances and requirements at the time of approval, and no record plat will be approved until all standards are satisfied. I was listening during the testimony, and I didn't write down any additional binding elements, and if I missed something, I apologize.
Okay. Mr. Carter, anything you need to add?
No.
Okay. All right, commissioners, the chair would now entertain a motion on docket PZ-18011, which is the development plan on approximately 14 acres. Any motions? Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of the preliminary plan based on compliance with objectives of the comprehensive plan, specifically those noted in applicant's submittal and testimony, including T-1-1 dealing with transportation objectives, LU-2-4 with respect to locating development in proximity to transportation and employment centers, LU-2-1, which provides for a mix of housing. Find, based on testimony and questions and discussion presented before this hearing today, or before this commission today, that the plan meets the provisions of the comprehensive plan as noted in the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations, I would include and incorporate the conditions of approval as noted by Jim.
All right. Mr. Carter, anything that needs to be added? Okay, adequate motion? All right, do we have a second?
Mr. Neal, seconds?
All right, any...
Who's second?
Uh, Mr. Neal.
Neal.
Any discussion on the motion to approve the development plan? Yes, sir, Mr. Finney.
Can a binding element be added at this time?
Sure, I mean, we can consider it, yeah.
Okay, could be considered?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, in light of, Mr. Carter saying that we don't have to accept everything that we've heard from expert testimony here...
Well, that's under a zoning change.
I under, well, but...
This is the development plan.
I understand. With the, with the development plan going in, would it be appropriate for a binding element to require them to put in a right turn lane into this thing to kind of, in some way, alleviate the problem traffic that's going to be there? We all understand, even though it's not been testified that there will be, would be any.
Let me get Mr. Carter to respond to that. Mr. Carter?
Only if the developer agrees to it at this point.
Since it's not required based on the traffic analysis, if, typically, we, we look for acknowledgement from the applicant that they agree with the proposed binding elements, and so I guess we could...
And as chairman, you know, I think we're a little bit far down the road here, you know, if that was a concern, we probably should have done it, you know, back when we, earlier in the process.
If it's not appropriate, it's not appropriate.
Let me just say, from a legal standpoint, the only way you can accomplish that without the developer's agreement is to deny the development plan and require them to come back with a new one.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the proposed development plan? Any further discussion? All right, seen none, we will proceed to vote on docket PZ-18010, which is approval of a development plan on approximately 14 acres, and the proposed zoning is R4 residential.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Klingenfuss?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Halfling?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
All right, docket PZ-118010 has been approved on a motion, development plan has been approved on a motion of 13 to 0. So before we break here for our meeting today, Ms. Alvey, is there anything coming up for next month that you are seeing?
You will have at least three applications, most likely a cell tower and two zoning MAP amendments.
And what about SRC? Is that maybe July?
We were going to try and have a study review committee meeting the fourth Thursday in July.
Okay.
At 5:00.
Give me anything you need to add. Okay. All right, folks, thank you all, and we're out of here before 1:00, but we'll stand adjourned.